Call the order, meeting. It is seven thirty-five. This meeting is being recorded on Zoom. Looking at the agenda, why don't we go right to meeting minutes if everyone's okay with that? They were, they were up in front of us the last meeting, I think there was. So Danielle, I didn't think there was there and there's double point.
I believe Danielle added some.
Okay, yeah. I read them. I don't know if anyone has any comments, recording or. On the meeting minutes from the joint meeting with.
I think the reason we have them on the agenda is, again, is because I was going to see if there was any further recording and I checked Danielle does not.
Right, yeah, I heard that directly from them, you know, telling us the explain and what happened. You know, so. Are you good, Jeff?
So that's it, there's nothing else there?
Yeah, so I think, um, just going back to the, the meeting two weeks ago, Danielle had greatly enhanced the, the meeting minutes with, um, from the recording. But it did still have that limitation of being, you know, up to that point. The comments like after that were from planning board's administrator and they were just, you know, they're pretty like, I think they mentioned you made a comment or Ryan, and I think that was about it, so.
So also lost in the abyss?
Yeah, well, I think you and I too, we, we were talking to the Northam operator and, you know, heard kind of what happened, you know, so. Just happens, I guess, something that happens. But I, I've read through them and, and understanding the issue. Personally, I'm fine with them. So if everyone else is. We can entertain the motion, just since Ryan's out, if you wanna read the motion.
I gave them to Warren.
Okay. Oh, Warren, perfect, all right, didn't wanna make you do it, Warren, but. Yeah, I think so.
I move that community planning commission go to accept them in its date of March twenty-fifth, two thousand twenty-four as written.
Thank you, Warren, number second?
Second, uh.
All right, thanks, I have a second. Motion for second, any further discussion? Seeing there's none. All in favor, say aye. Yes, opposed?
Aye.
Record show four in favor. Right, so. So.
One opposed.
Oh, you opposed?
Yep.
I'm sorry, I apologize.
Yep.
So let me correct the record, record three, aye, one opposed.
Correct.
Okay.
Thank you.
So, yeah, I'm principal, Jeff, just.
Yeah, that's all.
Yeah, I get it, it's just some of the information, so. Uh, okay. Through this, so if anyone that is online too, we show the, uh, two mid iron drive. Public hearing at eight P M, so if you're wondering why we're not starting that and just letting everyone know we can't do so until eight o'clock. As it's posted. So let's see, why don't we go to the A and R plan?
I just wanted to mention, Jillman called earlier to say that she would not be here right at seven thirty, so it would be fine for her to, you know, to do it after we.
Would you? On what?
This A and R.
The A and R, okay, I didn't even know, yeah. Yeah, I didn't know we had representation, I thought it was more of a, the my reading of it, your memo was just more of it was the select board approving this, like. Dividing it.
There are two, um, signatories on the application, one is the town, the other is the, the owner of the property, sorry, the town is the owner of the property, but.
Okay. So do you wanna, are you the property owner?
So, kinda.
Okay, do you, do you wanna take a second and explain? What?
Do you have?
Is it, is there an image or?
I can do that.
Well, yeah, I apologize, I, I guess I misread, I thought it was just a town owned parcel. All.
The entire parcel.
I think John, one of those parcels, you guys already own one parcel there?
Yeah.
Yeah, I own the middle parcel.
I, I own the middle parcel, I've had it for five years, um, paid off. Thirty-five thousand dollars in back taxes for it. And. As the, the board was putting it up for, the inviting route, they have for auction back pre-coverage.
Yep.
So this process started back in two thousand nineteen. And we were gonna buy the whole parcel for. In respect to Mr. Roberto's, um, request. I think one week before the, uh, Thompsonville ordeal. So it could reduce down from the. Large square volumes down to as small a parcel that could still give a reasonable building lot.
Well, the one parcel that we're interested in tonight is the, uh, is that one parcel, not the other ones.
Right.
Ignore the large parcel.
Okay.
Yeah.
Got it.
And that, just to determine if it can be an A and R, and then the town still own an A and R, but then they can sell.
Right, so what, are we, is it purely A and R tonight or not looking at access or anything?
No, nothing else, well, because it's not a real lot.
Right, okay.
As such.
Is it, if it gets joined, then?
Well, you want the next lot behind it.
Yep.
And there's another lot behind it that I think he's got his eyes on. So those three you can have a little lot.
Right, okay.
But first and foremost, oh, this has to be A and R first, so the town can then transfer in whatever, win by auction or whatever that is.
Right.
Right?
Um, Warren. I'm, I'm sorry, Mr. Chair.
You're, Warren, is this the piece of property, is that, this stuff out there?
Top of the hill.
Yeah. Yeah.
I think.
Okay, so this is the one, if, if you, if you go up, uh, bottom line, you know, to the top, I'm ready inside, as soon as you crest the hill.
Oh, this is the one that slopes right off, on, um?
No, this is at, at the top before it slopes off.
Oh, okay, all right, I was just trying to envision where this was, but, okay.
So, so as you crest the hill. It's.
Okay.
Right there. From link side. You can't really get up the hill from the other side, unless you're not giving it, so. Go, there you go.
Do you have any questions, any members of the board? Maxwell, Jeff said, uh. Warren's pretty up on it. It's my first time seeing it really, so. Not this one, but you've seen it before, foreigners come up. That's good.
Any other question?
I think you answered, Warren, why was the town holding the piece of property in first place?
Well, it was taxed out pretty.
All right.
Well, that's pretty much most of it, it's a lot of small lots over there that, uh, were not building them, they pay taxes for a while, they pay taxes and just let it go. The town takes the tax out and then either sits on your auction to that, in this case, uh, they had, they got an offer. And so, uh, they, they do it to their diligence.
Okay.
Getting the, uh, that one piece, uh, A and R, and then they have a piece that's. Who's they set, basically.
So I don't see a lot of opposition here, um, do, we're not, we don't need to take a vote in A and R newly, or?
You, you can, you should go to endorse the plan, but there is not public hearing, so, um, there's. It, it is entitled to A and R endorsement, so I would recommend that you vote to endorse it.
Okay. Warren, you wanna make a, a little bit of a written?
Yeah, I just voted, I just noticed.
Okay, thanks, then.
And the handler.
Yeah, sorry.
I move that the C P C go to approve the plan titled, Plan of Land in North Reading, Massachusetts, dated ten, eleven, twenty twenty-two, run by L J R Engineering Incorporated. For, um, known as Eight Out of One Road.
I just changed the word approved to endorse.
Well, okay. Eight Out of One Road, I move that the C P C vote to endorse the plan titled, Plan of Land in North Reading, Massachusetts, dated ten, eleven, twenty twenty-two, run by L J R Engineering Incorporated.
Second motion.
Thank you, Jeff. Uh, motion in the second, any further discussion? Seeing there's none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, um, I think, do we have to do the roll call too?
No. Oh, uh, do you have the note open, but no, no, that is.
That work I done. Record show four in favor, none opposed, and you want us to endorse it now? All of us.
Yeah.
About all.
Good idea. Gentlemen.
See, I'm not still know. Geez. Whatever, I have one, two, three.
Want you to talk for some of the new, uh, new. Two lines with, uh. Um, thank you, I have a little bit of a, and all the, I'm sure that could, uh, the majority cost are based on, with the voters that we actually located.
Yeah.
So, um, we don't, it's only been a couple of days.
But I see where it's.
Put, put flat one, then you gotta try.
So true. Who's, it's six. Still dropping, I'm still writing fives.
Yeah, yeah.
But.
I'll take care of this one.
I have a second chair. Actually, two.
We didn't.
Oh, well, that was, um. Uh. You want to, you want to, uh, actually, uh. The town is the one that's, like, that's, uh, reported. So it was. I think.
About the five.
That's fine, I couldn't.
Yeah, I'm like, it's transplanar, it's here.
Yeah, and that means.
Oh, yeah, right here?
Yeah, you can do it. It's a wise man, I'd say.
Yeah.
I don't know.
She has.
Because. That, that's, you know. So, Dola. Um, I can find, uh, the cost of the.
Tomorrow, we all.
Let's do that.
Yeah, yeah.
Oh, good.
The page is on.
Forty-four pages.
Yeah, lots of signatures.
Since for half the magnitude. Ristor is all one, it's almost like a mortgage.
That mortgage is horrible.
Yeah, that's true. Been a while since I heard that.
So that should be.
Last time I did it.
And then what happens, the option happens, and then we, you know, I put an extra one up. Now that is new.
No, I have one here, I, you're, you're, I, thank you. No, I'm good, I have one, thank you. I know those are fancy, I know.
The bar will last about ten years. Yeah.
We're gonna get a.
You know, we got our money worth on that.
Yeah, look, they're obviously left to play.
Yeah. Yeah.
Hey, guys, thank you. Thank you, everyone. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good luck. Right, so we have a meeting time. Jump over, Danielle, do we have any? Updates or all new business?
Yeah, I actually wanna talk about scheduling, so June eighteen, which we had a meeting scheduled for, but it's the override vote, so we can't have a meeting on the same night as the legend.
Right.
Uh, day, so, um, we can meet on the eighteen. I thought we would just push whatever we had on to the next meeting, but the next meeting is the week of July fourth, which we usually end up canceling because everyone goes away. I'm around, I know Jeff, I think he's on vacation or away, um, I don't know everybody else's availability, I thought we should. Decide what our next. Meeting.
I'll be, I'm, I'm not chose.
Yeah, you're in choice, because of that, you, again, I'm, I'm not all, you know.
I'm away the next week.
Yeah.
I'll be.
Yeah, I see, so. Yeah, so, all right, so, so why don't we do that and just push it off to the next meeting?
Okay, the third Tuesday then, just the normal, okay. Okay.
It's, it's the reality of summer, right, Warren?
The things that we would just have to put on, uh, I, we had advertised, um, RealRene already, but we'll, I will let them know, and we'll just re-advertise it, um, for that meeting. And then the only other thing was, I had put on our agenda, just, um, a work plan discussion for, just for the C P C, for the coming fiscal year.
Oh, great.
Would like to tackle this year, and also, um, I'd like to start talking about some of the changes to the subdivision and site plan review regulations that have been suggested to us by the consultants that were looking at, um, our stormwater permits and making sure that we have consistency between what we're required to do for stormwater permitting and then for our regulations, which has been kind of an ongoing project for about three or four years now. But we, we have had help both from a consultant and from the Switchep for Watershed Association, um, the latter has been for free, and they've actually given us really, really good, um. Suggestions, so I wanted to just sort of start that conversation and, um, kind of bring everyone up to speed. On the, on the suggestions that have been made so far and kind of maybe carry that forward for a few more meetings until we decide what we, what if anything we would like to. So those were the only two things, I can also wait till the end of July.
Danielle, I have a question, do we, uh, does the C P C, um, and Warren, maybe Danielle with this one, do we have like a, does the C P C do like a, a ten-year plan, or we have like a development? Plan that we usually do, or?
That's the ten-year plan, um, we did, completed the last master plan in twenty twenty. Oh. Um, so. We have that, and, and within that, there are recommendations for different, you know, variety of different kinds of projects, we have done some of the things that were recommended in the master plan, and others, I think, we've sort of had a consensus, it's like, you know what, good idea, but we're not ready to tackle it yet.
Right.
But yeah, we do have.
Oh, okay, I, I was just curious, I know boards do that on occasion, I didn't know we were in process of that.
Um, usually what, what I'll do is I'll choose a few things from that master plan to, for us to suggest to, you know, to address for the year, and then when we come in for our budget hearing, um, those are the things that I will say, um, this is what the C P C plans to do this year, um, they're not usually associated with. Budget, though, it's just, it's just staff, um. So that's, that's how we've done it before, um, I thought it would be a good idea to put a work plan, especially where, um, you know, the question was raised that we haven't really talked about what we wanna tackle this year, um, when, during the course of doing my review, um, whether it should be my goals or the C P C's goals, and I realized we haven't had a conversation about what the C P C's goals actually are. So I thought that would be a good way for us to go through what we all hope to, um, what you all hope to accomplish this year.
No, good idea, yeah, good idea.
Yeah.
Get the kicker on some ideas, some thoughts, I know that, you know, you've been kicking stuff around, and we talked about all the things, but to actually maybe put some of those things into play, I think would be kind of cool. Okay, do.
If you're interested for that meeting, I can, I can put a link of something after that, I know that, um, trying to think who was actually on the board. Warren, we only when they finished that master plan, sure, yes.
Is that the town's master plan, the twenty twenty, twenty thirty, oh, I've read that.
Yeah, that's, that's it.
Oh, okay, so it's the same, okay, I got you.
Your contributors, your contributors to, and so is the conservation, everybody, everybody else is also.
Okay.
That was in the C P C that did that, though.
We hired a P C S consultants, um, to do that plan for us.
And then, um, on the regulations on the stormwater, is, is there any deadline to coming into compliance on your?
Um, there is, and I should check with the engineering department because I don't quite remember, for the last few years, it's been, you know, the requirement for the town's atmospheric permit has been work on, you know, improving your subdivision and storm, and, uh, site plan review regulations in regard to stormwater, and at some point, it's going to be, really do need to be in compliance, we should be in compliance with what the stormwater permit requires anyway, for the towns that there's no inconsistency, and this is usually stuff just relating to erosion, flood control.
Right.
Um, rates of runoff, volume of runoff, these are all problems we've been having with subdivisions, whether halfway under construction and then a terribly big storm that comes in and the neighbors start calling, um, upset that they're getting flooded, I mean, those are, that's the kind of thing that this is meant to address.
But our, but our, just one second, Warren, but our peer review is looking through that lens, though, in their reviews of those, say, the one recent ones that we've done, they're looking, they're using the current regs in their review, aren't they, or, or, or are they forced to use ours?
They do have to use ours, ours, our stormwater bylaw refers to the state standards, the state standards are pretty much what we're expected to do anyway, but there are a few instances in our regulations where. It's kind of behind the times as far as what those standards actually are.
Yeah.
And then there are some things that we could be doing to prevent some of the issues that we've been seeing, even though the state standards don't require it, yet things like looking at maybe some of the volume of runoff, not just the rates, which are really causing some of these issues, state doesn't require us to do that, but it's probably not a bad idea.
Right. All right, thank you. That's good, thank you, Warren, sorry.
I know, that's, uh, that basically is gonna say is that the subdivision control requires us to, to, uh, make sure that the rate of, rate, uh, to, uh, exceed the reconstruction rate of, uh, but it never said anything about volume. And that's been a, a sticky point for quite a while, because, um, you know, you can slow it down, you know, if only five gallons came down, you would say fine, and if a thousand gallons came down, you could slow it down to five gallons at a time, you're still gonna add to the thousand gallons. So, yeah, so, so we're quite, the volume of calculating. And I don't know, the methodology required to calculate the volume is gonna be something for discussion, and, uh, that's an important point.
That's good, yes.
So, I'm sorry, so don't they, um. So don't they always calculate when we talk about this stuff, don't they always say, oh, a twenty-year storm, and then they, they start to categorize and they go all around a hundred-year storm and all, is, is that where volume comes in, or is it just strictly rate?
That's just strictly rate.
Yeah. Oh, okay.
That's, that's the problem, because. You know, you can control the rate, there's a number of things you can do to control the rate, but there's nothing to do about volume, so it's how much water comes out, so calculating. What, how we handle the, uh, the volume based on the square area that's being collected, that's something that needs to be worked on, and if you think about it for a while, that's not gonna be, it's not exactly easy, which is why it's different, yeah. Um, and we had to try to figure out some kind of, uh. Methodology to keep calculating that and to include that, the zack right here.
Bigger types. They should bigger types.
You have no idea how many factors.
Good, right? Everybody's here.
The only other thing I wanted to mention, and we could probably talk about it when we discuss the, uh, town meeting recommendations, um, I just, I did want to ask you if you would like me to schedule a P C C meeting prior to town meeting on the tenth, um, just usually we would meet at six thirty in the middle school conference room, but if we, that might be something that gets tied to our discussion recommendations, whether or not you wanna do a meeting, we don't always do one, it's up to you.
I think it's a practice, I'd like to start doing it, um, because we've, we've done it, you know, um, yeah, but I think we should get back in a bit of, yeah. Very quick, just touching, touching it, and the question I want on the articles, uh, there's, there's no other ones other than this that the C P C has any. Any comment?
We're usually only asked for recommendation for land use related.
Right, you and I've had that discussion before, sometimes they're considered kind of planning things.
But.
Or doing things, but we're.
Right, as far as like what gets printed in the warrant, for example, but during the course of town meeting, I mean, there are a number of articles, I think all of the articles they ask, they usually hit us.
Super smart. Deal you make on your phone is the deal you pay.
Eleven years, but no, apparently we do not.
Hey, man, thank you, little mute patrol there.
Oh.
It's whack them all, you're like.
I, you know, I accept this, I accept this, so that. I, I have mute control, but I.
There's people pop off, you're like. All right. Go ahead.
Jill, the A and R was approved.
Oh, it's already done?
You all said, yep.
Oh, hey, wow, you guys are efficient.
Same stuff with John, he has the A and R.
All right, wonderful, John, Matt, thank you so much, I appreciate it already, take care, good to see you for five minutes, five seconds, actually.
Thank you, gentlemen.
Thank you.
Take care, bye-bye.
All right, so we do have, so, well, you, you have more comments on that, sorry.
Sorry, so.
Go ahead.
So. So what you're suggesting is that we meet prior to town meeting? Um. Regularly, every time meeting we should be.
Yeah, and I think you'll find all the boards do that.
Okay.
Machines boards, you know, they all, they all do that, and, um, you know, at least the ones that are really seated at the, the front of the meeting, and it's, again, we're not always the one rendering any comment on. Whether we're approving or not a particular article, but I think it's just good practice, because we usually do, I mean, we usually have a couple with the affordable housing, house slots, and we should just always be, everyone on the same page, you know.
We do have meeting, of course, I mean, I think the exceptions have been where we have absolutely nothing.
Yeah, then, then we can make that call. I'm with you. I'm with you.
Or we're already, we've already voted on something, we're already, already, you know, all of the same mind.
Yeah.
So there's no necessary.
Well, let's keep it open, we, we can make that call based on. I just wanna make it, help, get everyone to understand, I think it's not a bad idea to have, so we're not looking less than it. There's any question, okay, so it is eight o'clock, so I'm gonna open the hearing on the two mid iron drive. Um, and if you could approach and just identify yourself and.
Joe, my name is Dan Cameron, I'm from, uh, D A D Survey Associates.
Hi, Dan.
And we're the ones that prepared the, uh, the site plan.
Yep.
So, um, there might be a couple of folks on Thompson, um, so we can, but, um, I think, uh, you, you called from the last meeting, there were three items. That you wanted us to address, um, hours of operation, parking concerns with respect to a file lane, and then some buffering, um, but also forced to, uh, uh, there was a concern about how the building lived, so, um, in terms of the hours of operation. Uh, there was a letter sent to the condominium board prior to their approval, um, outlining the hours of operations, and I did send that letter to Danielle, I don't know if you want me to read it, in terms of the hours that they've stipulated.
They have it in there.
Okay, all right, so, so we got the hours.
Should it be read for the, for the people who are on Zoom, maybe?
Sure, yeah. Okay, absolutely, okay, if you wanna read that, thanks, Jim.
Okay, so from December to March. Which, that'll probably have a fair amount of use, Mondays it'll be closed, Tuesday to Friday will be ten A M to nine P M, Saturday and Sunday from eight A M to six P M. And then from April to November, it would be the same hours as golf operation, which. I'm not a member, so maybe it's someone, but, you know, what it normally is during golf season, so when the club hosts and everything, it's supposed to be the same way.
Anybody go for it?
I'm not. Danielle, you have those hours, though, I think, don't you?
It's in the letter that was submitted to us, um, yeah, so I, I don't know, well, we can get to it when we, that's conditional, if you want with us.
You got it.
Um, the second item was there were parking concerns. Particularly with the file lane, and so I, I knocked up the site plan, but I, I kind of misunderstood it, because there's a file lane along this maintenance yard, right adjacent to the, uh, you know, with all simulated building we'll go, and then you should turn the corner. And I know the, uh, the woman that showed up at the last meeting, she's concerned about that road is leading to the maintenance area, which can be blocked off. Um, we have since, um, stuff that came in yesterday, they installed them this morning, I do have pictures of several, uh, filing, no parking filing signs along that roadway. So, um, they'll make sure, and they can also close the gate, prevent anyone from going up there parking there, so I think, Bill, that's, um, I think we're. Tell them with, the club is showing that they will address that, right, to make sure there's no parking up in there.
Yeah, well, I have questions, but I still want you just to go through the items.
Okay.
That I wanna just. I'll let you go, and then I can just, that's for.
Um, buffering, um, that I did amend the site plan to show, um, we have some contingency or two, of a fair amount of, um, trees that surrounds, especially a book called North East Horn, which is a building at the front of the building, with the upper right hand corner. Uh, existing trees that are there, they're in full moon right now. Uh existing trees that are there, they're in full moon right now, but even during the winter. There's a fair amount, a couple of pines there. So there's some pretty good, really good screenings there right now. I'm not even sure you have any room to put anymore. There's so much, you know, small and bigger trees. And and so we did also on the site plan, we did show um unit number four. Were able to get the asphalt firing on the condominium plans was prepared. So that's on the site plan as well. And from sort of their deck area, the house just outside the perimeter. Down to the buildings, two hundred fifty four feet. And it is downgrade, you know, there's a grade of this is quite a bit lower. You know, British grade be quite a bit lower than. Uh where the ready unit four with thirty four, so. Uh we're not sure. I mean, we think it's it's adequately screened right now. And I don't think folks have had a chance to take a look at it, but I think uh. I I think that's that's open goal right now. The fourth item, which is not on here, um but would be part of the building from the process, it's how the building can live. There's two entrances, kind of a front and side entrance. Both have a roof over it and there'll be lighting just under that roof. Entrance lighting, so about six feet high. So that's the only light in the building that we have right now. So. Those are the uh. Issues as we addressed, and like I said, I I did certainly revise site plan. And I'll revise that one more time to just show where the parking signs are actually.
Uh there's two, sorry. Those two entrances, is that? Yes, the small red box. Ones on the.
Yeah, there's one.
Yeah, the trees and the other ones on the kind of south.
Yeah.
Or plant south anyway.
Wanna look for plan?
I have the plan.
Oh, okay.
Just just some red square. If you go squares off, I suppose like.
Yeah, there's one on what we call the east only side.
Yes, yeah.
And then there's one down on the south of the side.
Okay, those are the two entrances.
Yep. And there was one question too, just while you're kind of going bulletproof through the things before I open up to the board is um another item that came up was the. The use and the way it was, it was simulators, two simulators, and then you were looking, put a putting green inside. So what's the status of that? If you discuss that with the group.
It's uh Kevin, you want?
Hello?
Yeah.
That Kevin? Yeah.
Yes.
Yeah, uh nothing.
Kevin, can you just say that by himself? Thank you.
Yeah, Kevin Emery, I'm the applicant, also a member, and I'm I'm the builder. Um. As far as the putting green, right now, we all we have is a plan for two simulators uh as a map.
Yeah.
Alright, um so that's still the plan. That's only on the plan right as now.
Yeah, yeah, I know that that came up, so I wanted to ask that question.
Yeah. But as far as as far as noise goes, it it is enclosed, so I mean, I I know that the neighbors were against the putting green. I just mentioned that we might put it in, you know, it wasn't finished plan or anything like that, but right now the plan just has two simulators. And I don't know why there would be opposed to the button other than because it'll make a lot less noise. But they're not gonna hear it anyways, so it means it's closed, you know, so that's that's the status is on that.
Thanks, Kevin.
Yeah.
Yeah, is that is both the general items and I have just questions and you can help answer those one.
Joe, no.
Okay, so I'm gonna just open it up to the board and dicey Jeff. Go ahead.
So so there is no proposed putting green.
Right now, no.
Can I, sorry, can I, can you guys hear me?
Yes, yes.
Okay, so this is my, I'm I'm Chris Young. I'm the I'm the general manager uh at the club. Sorry, I I was trying to figure out how to unmute here. Um so.
Sorry.
Oh, sorry, uh Cr- Cr- Christopher Young, uh I'm the general manager at at Thompson. Um. Yeah, 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 thank you, guys. So um. Just in that email letter to uh the uh the condo board. It basically shows, so we have a thirty by fi- fifty building. Currently, we propose to the condo board that will have two simulators in there. And then the rest of the space will either, if the demand is high enough, we'll put in a third simulator. Um if not, it could be. Uh a storage area, it could be an office space, there will be a bathroom in there. Um and then there could be, I mean, when 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 Kevin says a putting green in there, that's, again, that's just a teaching. Spot. It doesn't change the outlier of any of it. Um but, you know, again, all that 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 extra space. Is all in that email to the condo board, which the condo board approved five to zero to say yes to this. Uh project with that extra space being kind of a a question mark. But again, it would either be an extra teaching space. Uh a storage uh area or an office for probably our controller.
Okay.
And again, that that is all stated in that email.
So yeah, so I I guess maybe when we met the last time, I was on the, I I thought maybe I understood it wrong. I thought you were having two simulators inside and a putting green exterior.
No, 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 everything is interior.
I misunderstood, just gonna give you inside.
Yeah, okay, yeah, no problem.
Yeah, I'm sorry. Jeff, did you have any other questions?
Um so you, what I, I mean, I I have an idea of. What we need to plan and everything, the lighting part of it, that I mean, everything else, I I don't really, as long as the parking part of it. You know, I I guess we had a woman here. It was something that can be really disgusting, but she's very nice, but she had expressed like, you know, you couldn't even get a fire truck out there and it was all sorts of. Crazy parking. As long as that's being addressed, that's a good thing, I guess, you know. Um if they're not building anything outside of the proposed building, that's also a good thing. Um uh and the um the lighting part of it. Um. So I mean, I could see how that could be kind of annoying if you live close by and have those big spotlights beaming on a. The building or whatever, but um well, no, so you're out. So that's the thing, like the hours of operation. And all lighting and everything will shut down when hours are operational. Those lights aren't gonna be blasting all night and trying to someone trying to sleep or. You know what I mean? It's I I know that it's it's a ways away, but I'm just saying, if. That would, I mean, if I lived next door, that's the only thing I would be thinking about is it's one, you shut it down, you shut it down.
Yeah, the lights are underneath the the roofs by the doorway, so the lights aren't outside, so we've got a roof here and the lighting here.
I don't golf, so I don't know anything about.
If 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 you guys, if any one of you wanted to come take a look where this building is going. And see what the light would be, it's not a light that stands fifty feet tall. That we already have that was out there and there's never been a complaint once. But this is just a regular light. If you guys came and saw this property for thirty seconds and saw where these two small lights would be. You would have total understanding that these lights will have zero issue uh going forward.
Are you good next? Anything? You're good, Warren? Um I I just have a couple to follow up on. I think there are more of the parking. So the the question that I go into is uh so power, hours are good, parking I'll get to you and. You mentioned the buffers too. So in the construction of this building, will any of those that exist in greenery come down? Because it's it is good, it's a good screen. And and where I see it benefiting to is. Um with Alberta and John, who were um in the last meeting, I'm not sure if they're on or not, Daniel, but um. They, I think that screen, that's what I was concerned with, like. Their their view of that building um is screened by that, all that greenery. And like you said, during the season, it's it's pretty lush. Uh when I saw it uh recently, and then I think it's in some of the photographs that it's in. So um that's gonna stay that since you know, not cut down. Lighting's good, buffering good. So. I'm also good with the noise part because I do understand that function of what is happening in there. It's it's a very quiet, it's kind of whack of a golf ball. It's inside a building, so I'm comfortable with that. And it sounds like the hours are in alignment with the club itself. So again. I don't see this as being used any more than any other part portion of the of the club. Where where I have some issues, but it's just really something that we need to kind of address to clean things up. The last site plan we have is two thousand fifteen. And on that plan, the parking that's around that area is is very different than what's happening right now. And there's a couple of things that I can note. At least it is picked up on this site plan, but the. The equipment bay has grown some. It has come a little further towards the parking. Um you know, roughly three quarters of the handicap parking spaces that are right in the car area. So that's, it is what it is, you know. My my concern is making sure. That part of the road would have clean clear access to get to that fire access around the corner. I do see how you patched out, would be the striping, you know, two or three foot offs. Um but on the other side, seeing as though there there's parking of a gravel area. So you have those eight spots that are striped and those are on the approved plan. And then if you go just inside, like you're heading down that 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 access road, that's a gravel area, almost the same size. You know, at least eight spots itself that was filled with cars, you know, when when I, I've gone by there twice now. And uh and I went by on a, it was a Wednesday at four o'clock and there were four cars that in in the dirt. So it wasn't even a weekend or anything like that. Um so we need to, we need to address that because you show it here in the plan and you can see it pinch in. Before you go around that corner.
Yeah.
And that probably does represent the actual asphalt, edge of asphalt. Or pavement, but they're parking. They're parking in that area, so that would require, you know, if you if. Like new calculations on on whether you can do that, uh have it paved, have it striped, all things that are not really part of this application and. What you're what you're seeking, but but. You know, it is something that if you don't wanna go through all that, you need to get rid of those spots, in my opinion. And that's up for others on the board to talk about. And then if you go all the way over. For the straight parks, parking spots, you've added a spot next to the two handicap spots that sit out there. Um and that's been added. We have a photo too, if Daniel wants to show it or if it's not like a hide. But it's it's an extra spot that was striped out, so. Sorry.
Excuse me, um excuse me.
I apologize, sorry, God.
Question, I just see him in comment. Um but that that's what I found when it's out there and that's why I just wanna make sure that. This, whatever you're doing right now, has to adhere to the plan, the last plan that was approved and the last one we got approved is two thousand fifteen. Okay, so that's all I have to say, but was that Chris?
It was, sorry, I um that last spot, it was, we we tried to actually erase it. Is that is that the one you're talking, like when you first pull into that lot?
Well, someone was parked in it.
Yeah, and I know, and 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 we we it was it was wrongly traced. But anyways, that that's um the, but just for when it goes to parking as well. Um you know, again, I was just trying to clarify that. I I agree that, oh, yeah, nice, you got some pictures here, perfect. Um. That uh those, you know, our parking, you know, the the main time these these simulators get used. Basically is December through March. Um so we're expecting max probably. Twelve cars max in the parking lot, maybe maybe up to fifteen with staff. Um at one point, so I agree that those spots where those cars are there, they they need to get figured out, but I think with this plan. Again, our our max amount of cars would be maybe twelve to fifteen at a time in that parking lot.
Right, and and I do appreciate that the 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 cars that would be associated with the. With the simulator are X, but what we're what we're observing too is that the plan. In going through that space and trying to assess whether this would be an appropriate spot, does it have any any problems? Um we're we're seeing just parking in areas that aren't parking, are approved parking spots.
Yeah.
Um and you're aware too, Chris, of all the pullouts around the property that weren't in, you know, aren't aren't in the approved plans either. But you know, it's it's been so long, so. I don't know, you know, what we can do at this point, but at least on this one, I think. Um what I see is a lot of cars parked in a gravel area right up against. You know, on the butter at forty one Elm Street. And then per the comments of Debbie last week, they start to then curl around the corner. And then go single those two nose up the fire lane on on heavy traffic or, you know, heavy golf days. So we really have to uh come up with a better, you have to come up with a better plan.
And 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 I I totally agree and and we have dropped the ball on that where we get. You know, probably maybe eight to ten times a year, we have big events or big things that happen that. Uh you know, we we have, we've allowed cars to kind of park up there and that's a hu- a hundred percent on us. And that's where. We went out and bought those no parking toes toe zones signs that we took some pictures of. And we did hang them, uh they they arrived yesterday and we did hang them today around that corner. So that whole. Quote unquote, um fire lane now has signs on it that that doesn't allow parking. And we have, and we will be stricter on that. Uh but that's, that's not even for this building. That's even for just in general, all everyday purposes.
And and I discussed with our planner Danielle, just I think, you know, we we have a a draft of a conditional approval, but it's something that we want to add to that. It's just. Your updating of the the plan here. And I wanted to say like, I think. Based on what I'm looking at, you've updated actually edge of pavement better than the two thousand fifteen one. So I think you're. You're going down the right path, but the stripe issue should probably be updated. Um. In this plan, I mean, because it's. Everything is rotated totally differently. Like again, the the fence for the equipment bay is further out, so there's kind of new edges. So I think it'd be good to overlay, if it's the same civil engineer that you have, they can simply. You know, overlay that with the existing parking layout, the strike plan, and it'll show. Accurately kind of what this looks like and that that should be a condition is be updated because it's been whatever, ten years, nine years. So we should get an updated plan for this general area, not the entire development.
Fair enough.
Okay, I appreciate that. Um. So I'm going to just open it up to the public now, if there's no other comments from the board. And um if you if you uh have a question, just state your name. And uh and shoot. Anybody? You got on there.
Hello? Hi, can you hear us? This is John in Alberta.
We can, John. Hi.
Hi, how are you? Um I listened to everything that every everybody had to say. Um. It wasn't our issue. I appreciate that the parking issue uh was being addressed because I know the last time, I believe the. Attorney mentioned something about parking on what we call maintenance road up here, so I'm glad that's being addressed. Um. Couple of things that I heard, one was in. In start off that I like Chris and we see him, we say hello all the time and all that stuff. There's nothing to do personally. I heard something about a potential third simulator. Um. I don't think that's been approved by the board of trustees, so um I would assume there would be something that they would. The the clubhouse would go back and talk to the board about. Is that correct?
Uh that's that's not correct. Uh hey, hi, John in Alberta. Sorry, uh this is Chris, Chris again. Um and and I don't, I don't, I don't, I don't take it personally. Um yeah, so our my talks with Ed Sheehan, who is your. Board member who um is 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 part of this that I've been dealing with, uh does know that. A possible third simulator would go in, which, you know, again, letting him know that. Even if a third simulator goes in, it's only another four people. Uh yeah, so again, you're you're talking a max of. Twelve people at a time in the place, uh but that that was approved by by the board.
Chris, I I I gotta be, and I'm not to contradict you, but I've talked to Ed and I know Ed pretty well for a very long time. And uh when I heard the uh presentation two weeks ago. Um he flat out told me what got approved with two simulators, period. Nothing about a third one. And as far as as far as the putting green, and again, I think it was mentioned at the board, I think. I and I guess some of the board members thought putting green was outside. It's in the inside of the building. I don't care. So I I know I believe the builder said something. I don't know why these people are worried about the putting green. We thought it was outside, not inside. So that, take that right off the table. So that wasn't uh, that wasn't anything like that, but uh. Uh uh again, I saw what the board had had approved and I didn't see anything about a third simulator. I didn't. And you know, I I and I know that the condo association, the club also have some. Uh not to go here on dirty laundry, but it got a little contentious for a. uh, not to go here on dirty laundry, but it got a little contentious for a while. So might be something you might want to rethink, uh, a little bit. Um, Alberta, anything you want to chime in on?
Oh, yeah, I'm, I'm right here. Okay. So basically we weren't privy to a lot of the questions we had asked. We only got um, the past meeting notes. Um, but the only concern we had, our big concern was at the rear of the building, if trees were going to be removed. And, uh, there would be a lighting issue. You addressed the question about the lighting. That's great. Not a problem. So my, our understanding is no full, no trees are going to be removed from the back. Is that correct?
That's correct.
That is correct.
Yeah. So we don't, we don't have a problem with that. If that was going to be, we, that's what, that was our big concern. Clearly parking for us is not an issue. Um, so, well, I think we're good. We're good.
Jo- John in Alberta, Chris again, like you know, I've, I've tried to, I've worked with you guys, you know, pl- plenty over the years. And I, I promise this love lighting and the trees and whatnot will work and make sure that there are no issues for you guys with any lighting or any things of that sorts.
Yeah, thank you. Again, we did not have any updates. We only got a note that, hey, you're in a butter and here's a meeting. We did not have anything about the hours. We had no information whatsoever. So we only had a couple of concerns. You answered it and fine, good. And we really appreciate the board jumping in and, and helping us.
Yeah, Chris, again, my wife is like, we, two weeks ago, we, we got this letter. It was like we're operating the plant. We knew nothing. I mean, I didn't really want to bother Ed. I know Ed, I know his parents are sick and all that. I want to bother him. It's like, so we just wanted to kind of know. A couple of weeks ago, these questions could have been answered, like what's the hours? We didn't, we didn't have the share notes or anything like that. So we didn't know what the hours were gonna be. I didn't expect them to be anything bad, but I thought that was just a reasonable question to ask.
All, all very, sorry, all very fair. And the whole parking thing was very fair by, uh, I apologize. I'm not sure what her name is. And that was a very fair situation. Like I said, we've dropped the ball on that in the past and we have, we know, it, it made us more aware. So, um, for both of you guys, we will do our, our best to make sure that no, there are no issues for you guys going forward. And and I probably should have been on the Zoom last week or two weeks ago and maybe made this smoother as well, but I apologize for that. Um, but going forward, like I said, I'm, I'm more than happy to work with you guys and, and, and make sure we're talking with Ed and the board that everyone is very clear that there's nothing hidden here, that this is just a simulator building we're looking, put up for our members and uh, everything's indoors and just, you know, they can, they can come and play their golf and we can do some instruction in there.
First of all, we're actually thinking, you know, great, it's going to, it, it's actually an asset to the back. It's going to look better. We have no problem with that.
Well, I appreciate you being back. I mean, this is how the process should work. You know, you, you, you have some concerns, you raise them and then the applicant.
We appreciate the board coming out and taking a look and spending your time uh, coming out. We appreciate that very much still.
Well, it, we often find it just helps us understand it more so to visually to see the conditions. You just don't see it in a plan. Um, in a two D plan. So I, I appreciate it, John and Alberta. Thanks for, um, joining the meeting.
Thank you so much.
Thanks, thank you.
You're welcome. Any other public comments out there?
I'm going to sign off, John.
I'm all set. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
So, um, Danielle, I think, as I mentioned, and we discussed before, the only difference in your conditional letter would be as amended tonight would be something to do with the as-built on the, on the that area, you know, parking. And again, I think there, Dan, you're already halfway. You've got like some stuff, updated stuff. So that, that would be great because I don't think your striping plan won't change. It'll just be an updated almost edge of pavement that's not really represented in the two thousand fifteen plan. So it's not heavy lifting. Okay, so it's just updating. Maybe I, I believe I've seen the fifteen plan. So if I could get that. And I kind of marked it up a little bit too. I could even overlay this on the two thousand. You'd see like the difference, but either way, that's the only amendment. And if Brian, I guess, just like that. As amended tonight. Take the motion. But I think we're ready for that. Alright, everybody good?
Alright, uh, Chairman, I believe the meeting commission vote to approve the plan that on sudden plan was running mass showing opposed golf simulator building at the Thompson Golf Club dated March twenty ninth, twenty twenty four, run by DNA survey associates saying subject to the terms and conditions and certificate conditional approval dated June fourth as amended this evening.
Thanks, Mr. Carroll. Would there be a second?
A second.
Alright, and the motion in a second. Any further discussion? Alright, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Closed. Record show live in favor. Um, and, uh, I guess, do we have to do anything else? So there's nothing to sign. He'll just get that out.
Conditional approval, I'll stamp it in with the town clerk. I'll send you off the audit, um, and then I'll add that condition, um, we're pressing out.
Yep. And just reach out to Danielle and, you know, if there's a, in spring journey meeting, so if we're not clear, that, you know, we'll tell you if there's something more specific on the plan you're just questioning. But I appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you. Appreciate it.
Thanks for coming out.
Yeah, tha- tha- thank you very much.
Yep, thank you guys.
Board members, thank you very much. This is Kevin and me. I appreciate all your like work on this and, uh, I'll, I'll work closely with the building inspector and Danielle going forward. Thank you.
Thank you, Kevin. Thank you, Chris.
Yeah, thank you very much.
You know, if you ever hear a curtain, you're gonna get them all, you know, titanium clothes.
Yeah. Yeah, they make it pain, you know, but just, just to bring that, that building up to building code. The energy of code along will make that sound good. You know, the, the two thousand, you know, twenty-two building energy goal, we're twenty-two right now, right? Okay, thank you. I was watching. You wanted to pull it out?
No.
Yeah, okay. We're still live, but it's, it's, it picks up like the mic told us, it picks up my, my. I think our only other I M R agenda is our three A, right? Got it. So we have any, any on the, yeah, really anyone, is anyone? Or if anyone's on there to discuss because as with the other meetings, I wanted to first kind of open it up to, there's anyone. There isn't anyone.
Possibly Dan Mills.
Okay. Yeah, whoever. Dan, uh, you, you might be the only person that, that's remaining in the meeting that, that has a comment on the, uh, on the M E T A uh, three A subject. And, and this is a, a meeting to, to kind of have those discussions with the public. There's no one here in attendance in the, in our audience at town hall, but if you have any comments, Dan, I appreciate it.
Uh, I would, I haven't really heard your, your board's position or final position, I guess, on the matter. So I'm interested in that. Um, and the only, you know, I guess, to get right to my point, uh, it seems like there's a sense of reluctance to go forward with this, um, amongst different entities. And I guess the only thing that I would throw out there was a potential amendment to limit the number of units over the, uh, the lower road multifamily overlay district.
So Dan, that, that's very speci- that's more specific and I'm not sure we can do that. Can we limit?
We can. Um, so actually, so one of the things I put in the memo and this occurred to me, um, that we could not necessarily put a number cap, but we can introduce something else that I, if you wanted to, I don't know if you want to go this route or not, but I did discuss it with town council to see if it was an option. We can put in, um, like a lot area per dwelling unit, um, limitations. So you have to have, or I should say, um, minimum. So you have to have a certain amount of land area in order to have a unit. So if we put in a lot area per dwelling unit threshold of thirty-eight hundred square feet, that's the number that would get us to nine hundred eight units. And in effect, there would be a cap on, on the number of units that could be in that, you know, on those properties. Um, and that's the big number that's been permitted. That, that would be if we really, really, really wanted to be sure that this zoning wouldn't enable any further development.
Only problem would be if, is, would be if it somehow affected our approval. Well, is there yet that condition and, and they didn't like that condition, uh, and us, us taking what they're trying to expand and us limiting it? Whether they might say, well, we'd rather you take that condition.
Well, the language is fifteen units per acre minimum, right?
Yeah.
I mean, just, just the language of the law just stays high level here. And then what you're proposing is about eleven point four. Is what you're saying, thirty-eight hundred square feet, you're saying per unit?
It, it yields a high density.
Why are you in excess of that fifty?
Yeah, it's, it's way higher.
I get that we're already in excess of the fifteen.
No, but even that lot area per density cap would still, should still yield the density level. Because in the end, the total number of units on the property, oh, are you saying that that would cause the?
Wouldn't cause, I mean, saying that like nets to eleven point four or eight, or acre.
For the eight acres.
Well, I'm just by forty-five, five, sixty, by, by thirty, a hundred dollars, thirty, a hundred square feet. So.
Then that would be a problem. If it, if it knocked us below the threshold of fifteen of density, then, then it wouldn't be.
Yeah, because you, it's the minimum you must maintain. Like if we wanted to.
We could do more. We, we have more. But that's, I would, the density level would.
Twenty-nine hundred square feet.
That would be the number?
Yeah, to get sure to that, yeah.
So then that would, but that would allow there to be a little bit more than nine hundred eight, which I don't know how concerned people are about that. What would it be another hundred units or something like that? I, I don't know that.
What you said was eighty acres?
It's, it's seventy-nine acres. How many to nine hundred eight units?
Eleven eighty-six.
Eleven eighty-six. So that's actually smaller than.
It's being.
So I don't know if that would actually reduce the, the number of units in any way that would be meaningful. Cause then how many units could that yield? I mean, but then we don't.
Yeah, the question. So, yeah, I do, and so, um, Dan, if I could, so what, what is your main concern? Um, with asking that question? And what is your issue with that?
Again, uh, there, there seemed to be some reluctance on the board voting for this. I, I jumped the gun without hearing your position, but you asked me, you know, to to speak. So, um, that was my concern, trying to get a consensus among the board in the community to, um, get this in the direction of a pass at town meeting.
Right. So you're, you're in favor, Dan. And, and Dan, just to back up, we, we've had, um, some meetings the last few C P C meetings on for the public. And we're, we're, it's really just an open forum. The public's invited to come up, kind of give us your take on it for, against issues, questions. Uh, we're just trying to dispel a lot of the, um, the rumors, the myths, whatever, and just try to put reality to everything. So um, in opening with you, you just have to be in the, in the meeting, but, uh, we're not putting you on the spot. It was just, just to hear like, what's, what's your opinion on it? It sounds like you're, you're in favor of it, but you're trying to, you're noticing there, there's some pushback. So you're, you're throwing out the, the, the lower unit count. I, I assume.
Yeah, yeah, that's, that's generally right. Um, so that, has the board taken a vote on the, the articles? I wasn't at the last, I'm, I'll, I'll just jump in real quick. I wasn't at the last hearing. I was at the prior informational hearing. Uh, I was not at the last hearing, so I, I may have missed a, a vote, but it's, uh, on the agenda, it said discussion recommendation votes for June town meeting warrant articles. So I guess the, the question I have at hand is have you taken a recommend, made a recommendation for that, these articles?
Yeah, we have not, and we have those on our agenda tonight. So after our, our discussion. So I wanted to start with the public as we've done the last few meetings. Do you have anything else, Dan? Uh?
Yeah, so I'll just, you know, while, while I have the floor, I guess, um, so I didn't know that you could actually restrict the size of a unit. Um, it's my understanding you cannot restrict the bedroom count. Uh, I believe it was also the size and that's why I was just going with a straight unit count.
You can't restrict the size. Um, the lot area per dwelling unit would be the amount of land area you have to have for every one of those units. So like if your lot area per dwelling unit is, um, forty thousand square feet, that's one dwelling unit you could have on every forty thousand square feet of land. Doesn't think they the size of the house, but you can only have one unit on that forty thousand square feet. So this would be like a lot area for dwelling unit would be saying basically you have to have um, a certain amount of land area in order to reach the number of units. But I think they must be pointed out, if that knocks us below our density threshold, then it doesn't work because if it doesn't comply, so there would be no point doing it.
Right. And on your point to the veteran, there is no limit on the bedroom. But the only, the only question I have, I haven't really asked Danielle or even the building commissioner, but is it building code? You have a minimum size and you have a bedroom. Then not on that, on their. Of a bedroom, isn't it like ninety, you said, if this, you've seen the footage? Yeah, it's, there's literally some. Yeah. So there is, there is some limitation on what a bedroom is for the building code. I just don't know if this. So doesn't, doesn't the three A over ride?
Ride.
The desk, I don't know. So it's.
The way I understand it, it's seventy square feet.
You're right. That's what, that's what a bedroom is, but also you do need to have some means of egress.
Right. And, and the problem with that is, well, I mean, I could talk for a while, but with, what we're talking about, we, well, I found it, I've done a lot more research myself, to be honest with you, and I still am finding out more information. Um, and the more I look at this, I keep going back to the roots and the basic part of where I keep going with this and is that so in the Massachusetts state constitution, article eighty-nine, section two, part one, it's, it seems as though this, this law, this three A zoning law is very conflicting with that law, the whole rule act. And if you read it, um, and you can go on mass.gov, you can find it, article eighty-nine, section two slash one. And it really talks about the governance and the, the rights of the town in their zoning bylaws and what they can do and what they can't do. And basically the three A, the way I look at this, and I've been looking at this for almost a year now, Dan, it, it seems to have violated that. Now, that's probably why you see many cities and towns that are now, um, filing suit against the state. They're effectively filing suits. They're more and more popping up every day. Because I think the more you look into this, the more information you find. It's, it's, it's a law that's being challenged. It's in the courts. It's not settled law. And yet we have settled law that was established in nineteen sixty-six that grants us our sovereignty and our rights as a, as a, uh, a town to zone accordingly. We've been doing it for a hundred eighty-seven years. And this kind of takes that right away from us, Dan. So there's a, there's a lot behind this. There's a lot of work that's gone into it. Um, those are just some of the key points. I don't know whether you, you knew that or not, but those are just some of the key points.
Yeah, I'm gen- I'm familiar with those general topics. I guess I'm less concerned with whether this is, uh, you know, something that's mandated by the state in that there's legal issues and political issues and you know, a lot of other things that go along with it, then let's make it work because we're actually in a very favorable situation compared to pretty much every other community, I would say. Um, so why, why push against it with that effort and expose ourselves to to other, other things than? to other other things than um just meet meet the requirement? Um, I I guess I'm not sure what the the reason for the the uh, the effort to push again, push back against it. So except for except for philosophical or principle.
That's okay, Dan. That's fine. It's important that you understand both sides of this issue. Um, and I personally, um, I I'm not for this issue at this time. Um, and because there are so many unanswered questions, there is, you know, litigation going on. And I think that time is probably a favorable uh thing for us as a board personally. That's just how I feel. And I think that if we rush into something prematurely, that could be detrimental. Um, we don't know. There are a lot of unanswered questions right now still still on the table. After, you know, um carrying this thing up for a year, there's still unanswered questions. We've had the attorney in here. There's still unanswered questions. So in my opinion, I I don't think that this is something that towns should rush into. Um, I think we need to get this right. I think we need to get all the information out so that we can make an informed decision. No, good question. You know, like eight seventy nine acres you said was the total two times? It's eleven and a half units per acre.
So it would be too long. So I think the thought that we could cap it that way would it would work.
But they thought we were covered with the fifteen minimum with what was existing.
No, cuz they they don't care what's existing. They only care what's zoned for. So it has to be zoned to allow fifteen units to be acre as as density. So if this is.
Okay, so we do have a shortfall in there at that site.
If we have a shortfall, then if there's a point in doing it.
We do have a shortfall, right? We have nine hundred eight acres, which equates to eleven and a half per acre.
No, I mean, we don't have a shortfall now because we don't have the zoning that's in place now doesn't have any kind of requirement like that.
But if you got them to three A, they're not as currently constructed. They don't beat that. So there's.
Right, right. So I I think I know what you're saying. Like if you were to just go with what's constructed, it.
It's not fifteen per acre, right?
If I guess it's not, yeah.
Right. So is there's it's like it's over, it's over that seven fifty that they put in for us, right? I mean, that's the number. It's over that. That's why I think a lot of people, and it's a really good point, right, too? Um, and this is not for against kind of argument. It's just trying to be right with the numbers. It's it's people are seeing what is there now with Martin Martin's landing. And they're seeing seven fifty and saying, hey, we've got way more. We're good. But when you kind of actually look at the numbers.
You know, the reason for that I realized is well, so much of that land isn't usable. So you have X number of units and that's built at a very high density, but the entire site has looked has a fair amount of what land you have, what plane in the back of it, and that's not counted as useful area, but it is counted, I think, for overall acreage for for density. So I I mean, in reality, it's high density, but if you look at the entire properties, they there's extra land in there that brings the density count down. I think, I mean, as far as I understand.
Do we deserve, have we just taken the total square footage and made it forty thousand square feet? Because the real area was bigger than that.
Yeah, forty three five six. Forty nine five six.
Forty three five six. Okay.
As as permitted right now, it's two hundred and seventy seven units short of fifteen per acre.
Okay.
So I guess that would be one question for me. It's like, could they just come in and like over one of the parking lots be like, we're gonna build a hundred units over three story garage? Like, is there anything stopping them?
The owners? Yes. So actually what's stopping them to so the the properties now, if they stay constructed, if they stay in place, they can't be expanded because the upper protection district so severely limits. You can't go beyond um the threshold of fifteen percent impervious area. Both sites already exceed that by kind of a lot. So you can't expand the envelopes out at all without special permits and variances, which does zoning wouldn't allow for. I mean, you could, you could ask for it, but you have to zone by rights. So the only option to actually increase the sites would be either to knock the entire thing down and redevelop from the beginning or to add on to the heights of what's there, the the numbers of stories.
Or build over existing purpose.
Um, yeah, if you had existing impervious, yeah, you could, but then you still have two parking spaces per unit requirement. So you would have to find those parking spaces somewhere else and couldn't put more.
I think one 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 thing too, we we learned in the in the last week or two is is that state law overrides an HOA. So if you have, just as you said, you can't change that uh, that impervious, call it, you know, increase the building. But what you can do is if an owner of any one of those units so choose to um renovate that unit and put in as many bedrooms as they want, as long as they use the seventy square feet um, and and all that, they could they could do so and they could also um have completely wipe away the age restriction.
They did not say.
They can do that today, and I don't mean they, just one owner could do it, can say state law, once it becomes, by the way, once it becomes this, it right, they can't do it right now.
But if that already exists, so the fifty five plus is not a zoning, so.
I guess what I'm what I'm saying, I'll try to slam maybe about is they they're both 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 of these zones are multifamily. They don't have any age restrictions on them. So again, the the three A laws adding zero to this, you know, to what's there and 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 limiting, you know, adding less restrictions or whatever. There's no age restrictions. Multi chose to do the fifty five and older as their model, you know, their business plan. But what we're learned, what we've learned is you right now, what is protecting them as it is right now is their HOA. So you have a lot of owners and they've made their, you know, they all want to keep it fifty five. So there's the the more numbers, there's more motivation to keep it that way. The problem is, once you create this zone through the state, the the three A overrides and state overrides in HOA. Well, that you should check with council because we've heard from council that it's it's absolutely true. They can, an owner could go in there right now. Once it's three A, not now, but once it gets its vote and say, I'm gonna add bedrooms or whatever, and and I'm gonna have kids, and there's no way they can stop.
That's fine.
Can we find that out?
Sure. I will. I'll I'll ask John. I I can.
And I'll I'll put the question. I'll put the question as it was given to us, though, you know. You we just heard that. So it could be a myth.
Question for us. I I know I'm talking about it. I thought you were really ready, but I.
Just like we're talking about the numbers here, too, is so it's it's all about trying to get rid of the misconceptions and you know. All right, disinformation, but the uh what they can do now is they can't do that, but what they can do is once it becomes enacted um under that and it becomes that N B T A vessel. For lack of better word.
Once the three A is approved.
Right, yeah, for that area. It's.
Right, and then it changes.
It's not like it's not like mass can go into a condo somewhere off twenty eight and say, we're overriding this, and people can start putting it. It's not that because it's it it isn't that parcel is not part of that zone, that three A zone. That's got approved by the town. But that's what we need to check out, I think.
I I will ask.
This person went to law school. I didn't. Yeah, they're a practicing attorney. Yeah, this is our max.
I was gonna say, I think to further, Dan was a little concerned about, you know, what are some of the other concerns here? I think uh, select board member, Lynn, uh, has always made a good point. And that is, and you said it as well, Danielle's, yeah, okay, the only way I could seriously change, yeah, you level the whole place and build something now, okay? Well, if we change the zoning, the next generation could potentially be impacted by that. Uh, something could be built that would not be favorable to the uh, character of the town or what the people of the town actually want. So on a long term perspective, you know, there's a there is a risk there. You can't you can't discount that. In the short term, yeah, it's easy to say, yes, we can comply and do it. The next generation might not be in your best interest.
I mean, just to be clear, what this zoning district is, is is essentially it's a copy and paste of the zoning that was in place before, but with the addition of a half story. I mean, that's that's the change in it. There really wasn't any other change other than a ten percent affordability. I mean, that that was.
So I I think we I think we really do need to better understand the law. I really do. And what's going on in our state. I just, there are things that are going on that just I just wouldn't want to see happen here um with the three A zoning law and again, you know, I've seen other examples of this. I was on the phone today talking with a couple of inspectors and some things that are going on in different cities and towns that have already um accepted the three A um zoning um in their city and town. And there's issues. There are issues. Um. So that's why I always just go back to the very beginning and just say, you know what? I believe personally it's unconstitutional. I don't think that they've I think it's a bad law. I just, I don't think it was well thought out. I think it was just maybe it was a ten point one billion dollar money grab for developers to redevelop all the properties and maybe, yeah, empty out an edge wood and add two or three stories and four or five bedrooms to each one. Maybe that is a product. I don't know. But that's kind of what's happening. That's what's happening right now. As we speak, there are buildings being hauled out that have some X amount of bedrooms and now they don't. They have four and five times the bedrooms they had. It's a population growth uh factor, and it's happening. So I mean, we really have to look into it. That's why um, you know, I I really think that we 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 do need to we have to make the right decision here. We really do. We have to put, we have to do our job. Do the best we can and gather as much information as we can so that when the public actually does decide that that, you know what, all the cards are on the table, we've crossed all Ts, dotted all Is, and we can feel good about presenting it. But right now, I I personally don't.
I think you gotta ask yourself, too, is the two hundred and seventy seven, say again, that's the minimum um units that would be added if, you know, and potentially if they would be, it'd probably be on the edge wood side, just to be realistic, that's an older product, you know, there. Um, I don't know the year. What is the kind of construction?
Next.
Oh, that's not too bad. I thought it was a lot, a lot, a lot older than that. So um, it's before I moved into town, but um, but anyways, yeah, so I think they'd be maybe the first ones that would would be writing for it, but so you have to question that. Do you see that as a big problem? Um, that's a question for everybody. I can't answer for everyone. And then the other would be, do you see then the additional bedrooms? If you added a bedroom to every single one of these units, whether it be Mark's Landing or or Edgewood, you know, what does that look like? And and I think those are the, those are two areas that make me nervous. I can't put numbers on them, but they they make me nervous. It's.
We don't have any.
It's not changing, you know, we already, again, the two parcels are already multifamily. They're they're open to all ages. Um, we're not doing anything by changing the zoning there. We're we're literally conforming to a um, a law, i- i- you know what I mean? We're not conforming to actually any zoning. There's specifics, like I just mentioned, the fifteen and um, stuff like that, but it's it's really we're we're already, I think, performing well in this area. The the one thing we can probably do is is add some affordability element to it, and I don't see us wanting to um I think I take the risk of what could be more than we want to handle in that in those two parcels. That's what I'm worried.
Could could you run that square foot per unit number?
I don't think we can do it at all. I mean, unless you've got.
To capture the fifteen per acre.
I just don't know what that number would be. Be, I think that would, so that would be a number that would actually exceed more than I think that it actually the site would be. You know what I mean? Like, it would be a really high number. So I'm not sure it would do us.
Well, be another two hundred and sixty seven or whatever, so, right?
Okay.
Into the seventy nine acres.
Okay.
I mean, just in terms of capping that, like, cuz what you're saying right now is this, there is no cap. If you wanted to redevelop that, what would your average pay? So I think part of the problem too, Ryan, is that you're talking about when you're talking about redevelopment, you're talking about taking a two bedroom, changing that. And if you do that, you know, and that's what's happening in Cambridge right now. That's what's happening in Cambridge right now. They have buildings that had X amount of bedrooms, and now they have four and five times with the same footprint. And that presents a problem.
I'm done about that.
I understand that, but that's a problem. The three A law is a problem.
Even without it, the zoning doesn't allow that, because we can't zone for numbers of that. It's just not part of what we zone for.
So. They do what they built because that's what yields the most rent.
Right, it's all about numbers, yeah.
And if if six bedroom apartment is gonna get more rent, that's what they'll build, like.
Right.
Well, that's, yeah, of course. Yeah, of course, especially right now. I don't think that's a certain. Three bedroom bed fit, three bedroom bed fit. I was in the building the other day, fifty five hundred dollars a month. For studio, twenty five hundred a month. There's a lot of money in rentals right now. It's a big game.
Right.
They're making a ton of money.
Right.
But I think like the Edgewood's of the world have those two bedroom layouts because it's the most common, right?
Hmm.
Allows them to fill it up and get the most rent. It's a max. I think it's a five person maximum per unit and the place is pretty darn full, I think.
It is.
So, but I mean, I get what you're saying. Like, yeah, that'd be worst case scenario, I think for everyone. If you turned it around and all of a sudden you tripled the number of school kids coming out of these two properties, that would be very difficult for the town.
I mean, that's.
Still see that that, see how that would make sense for anybody to do that. Unless your fear is like the state's gonna come and take that. I think so. I, when I look at this, Ryan, and what I'm seeing, honestly, my honest opinion on this, what I'm seeing is that this law was created and developers, there's no more land, right? So how do you continue to stimulate? And you just look at, okay, well, if there's no more land, let's go ahead and create a a zoning change, a state mandated zoning change. And what that does is that it does exactly that. You can take the footprint, you can got the footprint, open it up. Instead of two bedrooms, now you have four bedrooms, or even just two to three, or whatever it is. You're generating revenue in a different fashion, a different manner. You're not going in and building from ground up. No, you're not doing that. You're taking buildings that exist and you're changing them. But if if Edgewood wanted to do that today, you think, you know, scientifically, just like with every lease that was up, they cleared out a building, every time an apartment came out, they built another bedroom in each one of those apartments. There's nothing we can do about that. Right? They could change all those two bedrooms with a big living room, cut that living room in half, take in another bedroom, leave no living space.
They have to.
All these three bedrooms.
Yeah, I was just gonna say, it's a myseptic consideration.
That's the only control. There's, we don't have.
I don't know what that could happen. Presumably, they didn't.
Right.
Overbuild that.
Right.
But but you can't stop that today.
Yeah, sorry, Warren. Go ahead.
I mean, this is this, any number of things you can uh think that might happen, but practical reality is all of those properties over there are so new, they're too new. The to try and tear them all apart and increase the number of bedrooms. I don't think there'd be, I think there'd be a loss in the end, the cost to exceed the value of trying to do that. So those properties are not gonna change in any substantial way for a long, long time. And as Daniel says, the change in that would make the zoning change in his miniscule. Because we already have that kind of zoning over there. There's really no great big change going on here in southern zoning codes. And the other thing is you is uh, and you literally to a minute ago, without sewer, they're pretty much, you could never put that many more bedrooms in there. They don't have enough discharge area or big enough plant to handle. So I mean, there are there are some some very real conditions that would have to be that are, I, the logistics of it are almost beyond doing, so.
That is fair.
So when you take the whole thing as a package, it's not gonna change. Nothing's gonna change there. So all the talk about what could happen in it, not happening. Realistically, practically, not happening. And I think everybody, anybody that's tried to run the numbers on that would know that it'd be a it'd be a negative almost immediately. The better off the way they're doing it, like you said, the rents. Right now, they're making money. Why would they tear that, stop making money, tear that park, try to put up a bedroom? It's not gonna, it's it wouldn't make it financially, it would make it more expensive. So so again, having and and you know, my my position on this is that we are very fortunate to have the the capability to meet these conditions without without much trouble at all, without making any, you know, we didn't have to make a major zoning change because we already had the zones pretty much that way. So we're it's not just the fact that we have the buildings there, everything's here, we meet all the criteria. It's the fact that we already had that kind of zoning there. It's not a major change. So so the thing is, Lauren, and and I get that. We've gone back and forth a thousand times, and we still can't find this happy medium. The thing is that we're giving up our, we're giving up that portion to a three A zoning law of the state. This town has done its own zoning and taken care of its own business for a long, long time. The state comes in with one law and wants to just pretty much bully you into saying, well, you know, and we all know the weights that they've put on this.
Yeah.
The weights that they've put on this, we understand that, and so that's what we're doing, we're just giving that up, and if you wanna give that up. I'm not willing to give that up.
Well, I I I I understand, there's a principle thing that you're talking about here, right, but um, all you have to do is look at forty B's, they've already done that.
And and the forty B was kicked down the key, that we kicked that, that was, that every city and town kicked that as far as they could go. And if the state, overall, I mean, this is, this is something that's going to be challenged federally. So I I really just think time right now is what we need, because we can, this conversation will go on and on, and we do it every, and we do it every night, every time we meet.
My only concern is, as Jeff has said, if we, if we, if we kick it too far down the road and then we don't make the cutoff. Then we are subject to uh, the conditions and the law, the uh, the rights for some of these grants. I mean, the state's not gonna back off, although, in the uh, attorney's opinion. Also, it's probably, they're probably not gonna back away from this, so um. The state's probably gonna stick to this, and I, and I, and I don't know that even taking it to the federal level, which they would win. Just like they took the forty B's to the federal level and didn't win, so.
Well, I mean, the thing is, you know, again, I, the people, every, a lot of people that I talk to, they're not interested in this. They're not interested, they like the town the way it is. So, you know what, I'm just representing them.
That's fine, but uh, by the same token, I'm looking out for all the people who, all of the things the town needs, the grants that they've collected. I mean.
There were four, there were four. There were four grants under the law that we won't qualify for. The seventeen are not under the law, they don't apply, it doesn't, it it's not under the law, the seventeen, only the four under the law.
But the iPads that sit in front of you was a result of a grant that we got, for Pay for Reproduction Act, and so that allowed us to have this equipment. I mean, we've used a lot of those, we've got millions of dollars out of the grants over the years. So uh, to the projects, especially when we do have some projects in town that like the season grant money, don't help them out, so. Uh, I understand, I understand your principle, I don't argue with your principle, I don't like the throw case from the record. I don't like the fact that they took away our home rule either, but they've done it a couple of times, but I, but I still don't like it, so I agree with you on that point, unimportantly. But, but um. The cut off, you know, spicy faces, when somebody used to say, you know, I think it's probably a mistake.
That's your opinion. I just think it's, it's worth fighting for the people's rights to obtain their autonomy and sovereignty, that they've had since. Seventeen thirteen, eighteen fifty-three, I can't see the other date, and they've had that ever since, so, that's just me, that's where I stand on this. I I'm not happy about this law, I just think it's being challenged, and until it becomes settled law, I don't think that this board. I really just don't think that we should be uh, integrating with the state on this.
Do you have, do you have any uh, any comments, Ryan, or Warren?
Uh, no, I mean, I I hear Warren's point, I I tend to think, I do agree, this is the best available option to us. But I, I think that also, you know, waiting till some of us clears the courts and gives us better clarity on it, I don't see much harm in it. Uh, I get that there's risk if we go till October to vote on it, and people vote against it, and then we are in. I guess, going against the state, they come after us for it, yeah, I I get that. I think at that point, the state's either won in court, and you kind of quickly rectify it, you vote at the next town meeting and you pass it, you're back in compliance, like. What is our risk there, that we go six months out of compliance, and we don't get a grant within the first six months of twenty twenty-five, what we otherwise would have? Versus the reward of, and over the next courses, the next twelve months, the courts weigh in, and maybe this whole thing goes away, and then we've avoided. Opening Pandora's box and augmenting our zoning, and for the little state, when, if you do it, like. If all this gets overturned, right, all these towns that have voted it in, they can't, they can't unring that bell. And I guess they could, they could go back and try to vote on it, but then they gotta clear that hurdle to, to change the zoning back, right? And that's a whole other process, so if our exposure is possibly being out of conformance for six months, if it doesn't pass in October. Uh, uh, if the law still, if the courts are upholding it come October, I'd be in favor of this plan, that would be my position. If if they haven't, or they've settled it, otherwise, maybe the whole thing goes away, I don't know, but I don't see, I don't see any real harm in waiting.
I agree.
Another, another eating cycle, you know?
I just wanted to say, something about timing, the reason that I had initially suggested that it would be important for us to bring this to June town meeting. Is in case we brought something to town meeting, and the reaction was, that's a terrible plan, go do the district somewhere else, go back to the drawing board. That's clearly not the feedback we're getting, it's not a matter of the plan we came up with or the location, it's, it's voted or not, it's compliance or not, that's more the question. So for me, I don't know that I necessarily see any difference between coming in June and coming in October, we're not gonna bring the exact same zoning in October if it fails in June. I don't see that happening, we would really have to come back with something different, so if if you're feeling like you would prefer to wait a few more months. I don't think that there's really any practical difference, I mean, that's just from my opinion, just as far as procedural stuff goes, because if it fails in June. We can't bring it back in October, unless this, the C P C has voted to recommend positively at both of those meetings, at least according to, you know, town council. I I it, I don't, I don't see a huge, I mean, if we're going to vote for something, and you think that there's greater comfort among, you know, residents or yourselves. And moving in October versus June, I I don't think there's really any difference.
Yeah, I think you you just put it really well, it's better than I would, it's, it's not, it's not where, it's why. It seems to be the question for most people, and everyone's, has their opinions, or their, and I, and I do agree with you. That's where I'm falling on, that it won't change, like, the the where, it's not gonna change for October, so. Um, having the three months to have more public meetings, and maybe two months, people realize, you know. We're not gonna vote on it if that's how the the board commission votes, but if we're not, then that will get more people out to these public sessions. That we can have over the next, you know, three months, four months, and, you know, just start to hear the public where they stand on things. But I think also too, we'll, we'll learn, like, we were seeing that rate with the earlier town meetings, that, you know, we, there were ten towns that voted. Um, you know, against this, you know, not to, not to approve it, um, I don't know the exact numbers to approve, because that, they have to go through certification. So that number's really great, but there's definitely more approving, you know, more, more approving than not. But in the next four months, and and this month in particular is a big time meeting month, you know, what's that number look like even after June tenth? It's just a week from June tenth, because a lot of town meetings are June tenth, um, so it'll be interesting to see that, and I think that's the kind of information. That'll just help inform people a little bit more up till October, so, you know, I'm comfortable with that personally, so it's, it's up to the. The rest of the members here, but, um, so anyone want to add, Max, sorry, you stay there.
I'm pretty much in agreement, I was here here, and my idea that uh, I don't think anybody wants to vote on something they don't have full clarity on. And I think that it's pretty obvious that a lot of the people in the town, um. Have heard lots of different things about this, some of them true, some of them not true, there's a lot of fog around this. And people, I don't think, even in this room, are necessarily confident in what they would make, given the lack of. Um, information and understanding of said information, so, so I don't see any, any loss in taking the time to. Uh, help everyone get to a place where they are comfortable in the decision they make, and making an objective of this commission to make sure that we better educate ourselves. And the members of our community, so that we can be confident in the vote we make, because I don't think it's worth making a vote that nobody's confident in.
I think we're really at a good point now, everyone's kind of expressed where they're at, and we might as well make the motions, um. Now, who wants to do that, you wanna do that? Uh, I think, um, we have three different ones here that Danielle's done.
I'd like to make a motion.
Sure, uh, there's, I just want to be clear with Danielle, so we have three different ones, we have the multifamily overlay. One, we have the site plan review language, and we have the zoning map update, correct? Okay, so we would need three separate motions.
So, so on the multifamily overlay one hundred, one hundred and four, Little Road. Uh, I move that the Community Planning Commission vote to pass over the article to town meeting. Site plan review language, um, I also moved that the Community Planning Commission vote to pass over the article. The town meeting, and the zoning map update, I moved to.
So you have a motion on the floor right now.
Oh, you wanna do one?
Well, yeah, you have to do one at a time.
I'm sorry.
Um, that's okay.
Well, I'm just gonna read all three of them, because I'm actually gonna ask you to pass over all, all, all three, so, yeah.
Point of order, point of order, Mr. Chair?
Yeah, go ahead.
Uh, it is, are you, since you're the sponsor, are you able to withdraw instead of pass over?
At this point, no, it's been printed and sent out, and then it's awarded, so no.
Thank you.
Thank you, good question, um, so anyway.
So that was, that first one was Article thirty?
Yeah, is there an actual article on these?
Yep, uh, so Article thirty is the multifamily, the Little Road multifamily's early district, it's thirty, thirty-one, thirty-two.
So Jeff.
Yeah.
Um, just to clarify, if you might want on that motion, just insert Article thirty, but it is just an article. I'm sure the motion's fine. Just give like thirty, or does it?
I I think the way that the passover articles are written, I think it should actually say, that the Community Planning Commission vote to recommend passing over. The article at town meeting.
Hear that, Jeff?
Vote to recommend passing over.
So the motion would be the multifamily overlay one hundred, one oh four, Little Road. The move that the Community Planning Commission vote to recommend to pass over.
Passing over.
Yeah, to recommend passing over the article to town meeting.
What's the difference, Danielle, between vote to pass or vote to recommend?
Well, because we can't pass over the article, town meeting has to pass, so the recommendation from the C P C would be that town meeting pass over, they still have to vote to do that.
So the movement decided to actually do the pass over.
Town meeting has to vote, so town meeting has to vote one way or another.
Yeah, either way.
Um, they either vote to pass it over.
Okay.
They vote to, no, they vote, yeah.
Okay, yeah, thank you.
All right, so Jeff, you wanna reread that, uh, it, with the recommend inserted, if you don't want it in the thirty?
Uh, yes, um, I moved that the Community Planning Commission vote to recommend pass over. At the article, town meeting on Article thirty.
Second, I have a second, any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Opposed.
Uh, let the record show, four in, and I said aye, I I said very well, let the record show, four in favor, wanna oppose, and the motion carries. There you go, second motion.
Sure, um, I moved that the Community Planning Commission vote to recommend pass over. Uh, Article thirty-one. Um, uh, to the town meeting, that would be the site plan rebuild.
Second, second, motion and second, any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Let the record show, four in favor, uh, the, I vote aye, so four in favor, uh, one opposed, and the motion carries. And the third one?
Yeah, and the zoning map update, I move that the Community Planning Commission vote to recommend pass over. Article in town meeting, one hundred and thirty-two.
Second, motion is second, any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, all against, both, so, record show, we get four in favor, one opposed, motion carries. So. Any other business? Dan, thank you for staying on.
Thank you, have a good night.
Oh, that's you raising a hand, or is that Danielle?
Oh, no, that's just my question. So the next time we meet will be six thirty in the middle school, right before town meeting.
Yeah.
Um, and then after that, it will be our July, our third Tuesday in July.
And Danielle, like we met before, we were kind of just one of those rooms right opposite kind of the, the gym area. So just so everyone knows, you're going to the gym, there's a little library, kind of rooms there, individual ones, probably gonna be.
Times have changed.
Yeah.
We had a smoking section in that.
Oh, we definitely did, I remember that. It's the college, spread all day. And it's like sixteen handles, yeah, the springs. Um, all right, well, appreciate it, guys, thanks for bearing with me, still learning the ropes here.